Force them in.
All right, the clock on the wall, I see it's seven o'clock, so I'll call the meeting to order and we'll have a roll call.
Jeanette Libby-Holdman?
Yeah.
Ginger Riddle?
Here.
Jerry Geese?
Here.
Nancy McDougal?
Here.
Richard Hannan?
Present.
Clear, we have a forum, we have two members present, absent, but we have a forum. Under old business, the first item of the agenda, on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of last month, February 19th. As the planning commission members had a chance to read it, do they have any comments? Do not take a motion for a-
Do we accept the minutes?
I'll second it.
We have a motion, a second to approve the minutes, please call the roll.
Jeanette Libby-Holdman?
Of Spain.
Ginger Riddle?
Yes.
Jerry Geese?
Yes.
Nancy McDougal?
Yes.
Richard Hannan?
Yes.
Under old, under new business, our first case is case 2024 DEV 008 and 009, the preliminary and final plat of replat of Hazlet subdivision. The proposal is to create two lots, one 7.49 acres and the other lot 59 hundredths of an acre. That's the one the planning commission will remember that we recently rezoned, I guess, last month. And the city council has approved that rezoning. I'll ask for a staff report, comment on the checklist, anything that you have been up, has been updated.
Excellent question, thank you, Commissioner. Nothing of notes to be, to be updated.
It seems like it was pretty minor stuff, like-
Yep.
An actual, the paper copy, has it been delivered, it'd have to be, I guess, before you can-
Correct.
There's nothing you're waiting for?
No, nothing I'm waiting for.
Any questions or comments from the members?
I have one, and I'm sure I'm overlooking something. The current owner, it says, is Daniel Hazlet-
Mm-hmm.
And Jay Jesus Delgado.
Yes, correct.
Okay, then who are they selling it to?
So they've entered into a partnership to, to sell the property from Mr. Hazlet to Mr. Delgado. They, and that's how, how it stands. So they're, they're working, they, they submitted this application concurrently.
Okay, so when you said the, the owner to the north, that's actually Delgado?
Yes, yes.
Right, okay, yes, he owns all of this.
So let me, let me pull up a-
Yeah, this is where it lives right there. All right, all right.
Was, was that cleared up?
Clear to me, but yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I have, I have some concerns. I've been around a long time, and on the last time I was on the planning commission, we had really issues with this particular piece of property because it's definitely in a floodplain area. I had noticed, noted that JD had made steps into digging out the hillside behind the property in preparation for this development, which in fact, if I knew anything about water, it would make me think that the water has nowhere to go now. So I would request that we have like a three-foot barrier, maybe even gravel, that will allow that water to come down that hill, which will come down pretty quickly if we get five inches in an hour, and actually not wash his whole building and everything else out, Joe in the back. I'm just, I'm just concerned because I've seen a lot of water on that property over the years. And I'm thinking, building it into the hill is probably not the wisest move, even though it's not supposed to be any of my business. I do feel that that is not a wise thing to do, and that we need, no matter who owns the property, there needs to be almost like a French drain type of situation where the water can run off. That's my concern.
Mike, did you, I didn't follow that, did you follow that? I don't know where she means exactly.
It is correct that the majority of the property within lot number two is located within the special flood hazard area identified under the FEMA firm maps. And any work within that area is required to obtain a floodplain permit through the Lansing Public Works Department. Mr. Delgado is aware, we have made him aware that, of that via a letter, that any work within the SFHA is required to have a permit, and that permit will be reviewed by our property to make sure that we do not do anything in contravention to the floodplain regulations as adopted in our code of ordinance.
Has, has work been ongoing there?
There, there has been some work within that area, and a letter was issued by the Public Works Department informing Mr. Delgado of the rules and regulations associated with the floodplain.
You have other questions?
I do not.
What's your pleasure? Well, we're actually approving a preliminary and a final plat, there's two, two actions. We can combine them if we want, you can make two motions. Josh, do you have a preference?
I would just take care of it in one, one motion.
If that's, if that's your intention. I'm ready.
I did provide under action options, kind of your, your language, if you-
Yeah, I, I can put it in my own language, you guys will have to adapt it.
We don't have that in front of us.
Well, here, let me pull it, let me pull it up for you. Here you are, your action options. Well, listen, listen, there's always so much.
Yeah, I've got that, yeah. Okay, I, I move that we, we approve case number 2024-DEV-008 and 009. And go forward.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion of the motion? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Jeanette Libby-Holdman?
Yes.
Ginger Riddle?
Yes.
Jerry Geese?
Yes.
Nancy McDougal?
Yes.
Richard Hannan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Our next case under new business is case 2025 DEV 2000-002, Epic Estates rezoning. This is a rezoning of 145 acres, north of where we were last week, McIntyre and Highway 7, rezoning from agricultural to R4, B3, and I1. The property owner is proposing future development, there's nothing I, that I know of that's specifically pending, being looked at on this. The staff report includes the findings of facts. When we make our decision, we need to base it on findings of facts or other conditions that, situations that we, that seem appropriate. I'll, before I'll open the public hearing, I'm going to ask the staff if they have anything they want to add on this.
I don't believe so, I put it all in the staff report. If you have any questions, I do stand open for those.
Either now or after the public hearing, I'll ask us to kind of go through the findings of facts as you've got them in your staff report. At this time, it's 7:08, I'll open the public hearing. I'll ask anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to use the podium and the microphone to sign in with your name and your address and, and let us know who you are.
Hey. My name's Alicia Van Scholent, previously Alicia Mine, and I just have a question. I'm only interested in incentive, in incentives. I would love to see Lansing develop a little bit. I would love to see properties that are affordable for kids, you know? I'd also like to see some jobs for the kids. But my big thing is if this, I know this isn't, you're not asking for RHID on this right now, right? There's no incentives to develop this.
They, they, they wouldn't come to us.
Okay, and then the other thing I have to ask is R4, is that the zoning that would be used to prep for those sort of incentives?
It, it could be done in other zoning districts, it would not have to be R4.
Could be any, they could ask over any, okay. But this is not, this is not asking for any-
Not to us, and those, those are requests of the city council, we see them, but we don't act on them.
All right, thanks, that was all-
Sure.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Mahan, and I live off McIntyre. So I guess my main concern would be safety. There's a transfer station that does controlled burns, and I don't know if you're aware of this, but it was like a year or two ago, us on McIntyre and I think surrounding homes were called to evacuate our houses because the burn got out of control. And my thought with the development, you know, nothing's proposed right now, but my concern would be putting high-density housing or allowing that to be zoned that way, and it devastating families that don't have the financial means to recover from that. So that would be one of my concerns. And then this property surrounds farm sites, rural residence, and other agricultural land, so there will be farming operations, you know, farming with like big tractors, calling animals, like that could be some conflict there. And then my other thought is a safety concern. My neighbors and I, you know, we love to live in this area, it's very safe. We can leave our houses unlocked, cars unlocked, like we don't really worry about crime, and that's what I really like about Lansing. But the thought of like rezoning this with the possibility of a lot more people, that would take away our, you know, comfort. But that's my comment.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
You said the control burn-
Yeah, transfers-
It sounded like it was pretty bad.
I mean, like at the time, I was 23 and my grandma was on hospice, and so like trying to, it was the transfer station.
Was it a city-controlled burn or private property?
It was city, and the sheriff department called us.
Who did?
The sheriff department at 2:00 AM.
Wasn't a county-controlled burn?
No, it was the city. It was at the transfer station, it got out of control.
I doubt burns are allowed in industrial, that's not a category.
Hi. I'm Mary Moppen, and I live next door to her at 13885 McIntyre. And there's a lot of talk about, a lot of developments going on right around us. I don't have a huge problem with one, but I have a big problem with doing all this stuff to the south and the high-density plan for that area. But my biggest problem with all of it is the traffic. We already have a terrible times, of times getting out and going north or across McIntyre, across the highway, much less going south. The other day, and we haven't done anything out there yet, there were six cars waiting to go right or across, and the traffic's gotten heavier since the road got paved, and it's such a direct access over to Highway 5. So all of these developments are talking about entry from McIntyre, and it's going to be a huge problem. Going to have to be thinking about traffic light or circle, and God forbid the R-cut that we were presented with once before. But I'm really wondering what's going to happen with all the traffic out there.
Thank you.
Tom, excuse me, Tom Lahawn. I only have one concern, and that is I need to hear the definition of I1. If you're going to put up to 400 housing units in 170 acres, what kind of industrial are you planning on putting in? An automotive plant, you know, give me some guidance, I1 definition.
You can look in the UDO to find out which state, which types of uses, I'm not going to list all of them now.
Give us, give us a hint.
This is our, this is our, this is our light industrial zoning designation.
Light industrial, would that be manufacturing, or would that be like cars or-
It can be a wide variety of things, from entertainment venues through storage facilities to manuf, small manufacturing.
Okay, we have two industrial classifications, light and heavy, and I, I think the zoning ordinance is online, and you can look up the definitions in, because it's 50 or 75 and maybe-
Okay.
And so, rather than go through the whole thing.
All right, thank you.
I'm going to hand this out to you. So that's a picture of the public notice that is on McIntyre. I'm April Cromer, and I live at 23916 131st Street, I'm about three miles, I think probably three miles or less from this particular development. I know that the city has complete, has repeatedly discussed developing this area. I know that the K7 corridor has been a topic of discussion, but I would like to emphasize that the importance of following the comprehensive plan. February 19th, I know that you all passed R4 Housing for the Delaware Ridge Project. I know that a couple of you denied it, you voted no on it, realizing that that was not how it was in the comprehensive plan that was discussed during that meeting. During that same meeting, I remember Mr. Gensler saying that the comprehensive plan was outdated, and they knew that it was outdated, and I don't think that that's a good reason to deviate from the comprehensive plan. I think that the legislators put forth statutes that govern the com, how we do the comprehensive plan, how you put it, put forth a comprehensive plan, and it's very important to follow those statutory procedures. May 16th, 2024, in your unified development ordinance, it indicates, and this may answer this gentleman's question. It indicates that R4 District is allocated for high-density residential developments. B3 District requires larger lots, direct access to major streets, making it appropriate for automobile-oriented businesses, regional commercial, and office developments. The ordinance also specifies that pedestrian links must be provided within B3 areas to connect local streets on either side of K7. This is what is in the ordinance, I'm reading this verbatim. Facilitating access between residential neighborhoods, schools, and parks. The pedestrian links and larger lots required for B3 will increase city costs, and the public infrastructure is not sufficient on this property. The ordinance vaguely defines light industrial, but specifies it must not be obnoxious and should be compatible with the nearby agricultural districts. So driving down McIntyre, I noticed the sign that, that I posted, that I printed for you, and it says on there I4, which I believe is heavy industrial. So I'm wondering if that was just a slip of the pen, which could be an error, but this is a sign that should be posted to the public, and I think it's required by statute that you put that out there. But it's not appropriate with the letters that were submitted to those who received, who were contiguous properties. They said R4, B3, and I1, so there is a little bit of difference with that. On March 6th, at the city council meeting, the attorney, I'm assuming he's the attorney, asserted that the city does not have the authority to dictate how individuals use their property, which runs counter to the objectives of the zoning regulations outlined in state statutes. According to Kansas law, statutes must govern land to protect surrounding areas from inconsistent uses that could affect property values, safety, and community character, the Golden rules. The Kansas Supreme Court case Golden versus City of Overland Park, 1978, established that zoning decisions should align with the adopted or recognized master plan. KSA 12747 specifies the procedures for the preparation and adoption of the comprehensive plan as required by state law. The Kansas Supreme Court affirmed that governing bodies should not overlook the comprehensive plan. There are several Attorney General opinions also regarding zoning, protest petitions, in regard to comprehensive plans. So I'm asking you today to vote no on this proposal because it conflicts with the comprehensive plan, just like the Delaware Ridge project did. A protest petition for this project has already been started. For anyone who is in here who would like to sign that petition, I will be in the foyer. Again, thank you for the opportunity to come and speak.
The, the city doesn't have an I4 zoning classification, the sign me, should read I1. For the, for discussions among the planning commissioners, comprehensive plans are a loose guide. And although it's presumed that a request that matches the comprehensive plan, or an application is consistent with the plan, it's not, it's not automatic. There have been court cases that say that, that, that it, it doesn't have to be 100%. The comprehensive plan is more like a wish list. The city, the city, at the time they adopted the plan, would have liked to have an office complex like, like in Johnson County or something at that location. But the uses of land is almost always dictated by demand and the property owner, not by our wish list. It would not be inconsistent to make a recommendation on this request with the knowledge that it's inconsistent with the letter of the, of the comprehensive plan. I would certainly note it in my motion that, that, that's what you're doing. We've, we've modified the comprehensive plan by motions in the past. Anybody else would like to speak?
My name is Chuck Ebert, I live at 15186 Barwood Drive in Baser. And don't take that as me being an outsider. I graduated from Lansing High years ago. I own the property immediately to the north of the subject that you're talking about here. I guess my question is, I did not receive any notification about this. Had it not been for a phone call from a friend and a neighbor, I wouldn't even have known about this. I knew the sewers went in, and the city reached out to me when that happened because there was legal stuff that had to be done for the sewer system across my property. But as far as this development, I have zero knowledge, so I have nothing prepared to discuss, but I, I believe there should be some type of notification, and I don't know the letter of the law, but I feel like I've been blindsided by this. Any questions, that's all I have to say.
It's possible that there was a wrong address, maybe the county records, we would have used county records.
They had my address when we did the sewer easement, so I know that somebody within the city of Lansing had it.
You're in the 892 feet just to the north, there's two slots there.
There is a half mile.
He owns the Carnahan Farm. How many acres do you have there, Chuck?
What's that?
How many acres do you have there?
26, 27, somewhere in that neighborhood. It's been agriculture for years. When I bought the property over 30 years ago, taxes were $15 a year. They are 10 times that now. I've been annexed into the city against my will, so part of my property is in the city, part of it's in the county. I feel like there is not good communication between the city and the property owners, and I'll just say between the city and myself, because I'm not going to speak for others. So I don't know what needs to be done, but this is a poor way to execute. Any questions?
Thank you.
Do I need to sign up again? I just, since it's been brought up, that the signage and basically the notification to property owners and those passing by the property has been inaccurate. Whether that alone will be enough for you guys to make them take this back and do things a little, should I say properly? But everybody should be notified, right, and there should be proper notifications, so.
Are you close enough to have been notified?
No, I'm not close enough, I'm on Main Street. My parents have that property at 208 South Main Street, which is in a trust. I thought my brother was going to be here this morning, or today, but he's not. Anyway, our concerns overall are just the direction that development takes. I would like to see something that includes parklands and sidewalks and nice businesses, maybe not storage units all up and down Main Street. I think we can hold out for better than that, thanks.
I'm Scott Tenner, I live at 13697 McIntyre Road, I live right across the street from this development, proposed development. I'm not against development, I'm just against the proposed zoning of this. Again, and I think you maybe just shut this down, but it doesn't follow the comprehensive plan. I mean, you've got to, you've got to do planning for a reason, people rely on that planning, and if you're just going to willy-nilly change the planning and change the zoning to not meet your, like your planning, it does none of the neighbors any good. So the only reason why I really oppose this is because you're wanting to rezone something that doesn't meet the comprehensive plan. Change the comprehensive plan first, and then change the zoning. That's all.
My name's Paul Cromer, I live at 131st Street. I would ask that you guys would think about what is being asked of you tonight. You don't even know what they want to put in this, you just know they want to rezone it to this, to this, to this. There's been nothing given to you guys about what they may or may not put in there, and then there's even a question about the industrial. Some of the, some of the landowners weren't notified. We've got gentlemen coming up here asking a question of the city, and I'm not going to tell you that, you can look it up for yourself. I just think that that's very disingenuous. We've had people talk about not getting notified, and, and yes, they do have to be contiguous to receive a letter and everything else, but the sign that they posted up for the whole public, anyone that goes up and down that street was wrong. So any person that pulled off to that street, what are they seeing? Exactly what the sign says, because, oh, we ran it in the newspaper. How many people read the newspapers? I don't know, I don't. So there's not a lot of notification back and forth between the city of Lansing and the citizens of Lansing. People need to know what's going on, and when people come and have questions, I just think that it was totally disrespectful not to answer that man's question. So I would ask you guys to send this back until they can decide what they want. They can market it and then present a plan to get it, if, if this is what you guys want, growth, east, west, north, south, then you guys will be all for it, but you don't even know what you're rezoning for. I'd just like to close with this, Deuteronomy 2717, cursed is he that moves his neighbor's boundary mark, and all the people shall say amen. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak?
My name's Pat Melvin, I live on McIntyre Road. I'm close to contiguous, and I actually did get a letter on this one. I haven't gotten any, many other letters, let me put it that way. If they don't feel like sending out a notification, they're just not going to. My question is, isn't there an industrial park on Gilman? My question is, isn't there an industrial park on Gilman for this industrial stuff? Shouldn't it be using the industrial park?
Well, you know there is, so we know there is.
Yes, a mini one.
So why are we putting more industry out here instead of using the nice industrial
I'm about to close the public hearing, so you won't be able to speak later. If you have something, you need to say it now. Okay, you've probably covered it all. I'll close. It's 7:31. I'll close the public hearing. I'll open the discussion to the staff. You have questions? You have comments?
I have a comment, of course. Part of the issue here, that I understand, the development of Lansing, is for us to bring in light industry businesses to offset our property tax problem, because our legislators aren't doing a very good job of figuring that out for us. It's really getting ridiculous. So I understand the fact that we put the sewer in to attract more business. My understanding for this rezoning is purely to find buyers, because the people who own the property now as agriculture, they are wanting to sell the property. And I'm sure they feel that they might get a much better price if they don't leave it as agriculture. I mean, you can see other places, even in Baser, where they're clearing land, even though they're not building anything on it, just to make it more attractive to the buyer. That is what I think is really happening, and I do not believe that the company representing them has a clue what will really want to go in there. And it should be industrial. We all need the offset. I pay $5,000 property taxes on my house that I bought for $39,000. So I'm telling you, we have to do something. It might be the wrong thing, but we've got to try and do something. And my feeling is, this small portion, I'm sorry, Mr. Ebert, you definitely should have been notified, this small portion here is going to eventually be some kind of industrial, whether it's, I don't call multifamily housing really industrial. I think that we need to look for small businesses and maybe tech companies that want to come in and isolate themselves from the main cities and things like that. I mean, we have this huge thing out here on Eisenhower, and nobody's interested because it's so hard to get to Eisenhower from here. So this is a better opportunity because it's right on the main road. I do not understand how the traffic will flow. We'd have to have a traffic something done on this. But I do understand why we are facing this today and why they want to put something in there, and we want to attract businesses that will help offset our problems.
Can you put up the maps that are further back in the packet that show the different zonings and where they, what they're wanting, what they're being proposed?
Thank you. Is this what you're looking for, Nancy?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
So if you also allow me, I'll jump over here, just to give a little bit better perspective on what that looks like. So this is, the lines here are actually the sewer lines that got built out in 2024, 2023. So essentially, everything, and this is rough, roughly, just so we're all clear, roughly everything east of this property line is industrial. If you then compare that to here, you've got the R4 zoning in between from the, on the east side of this to about, well, let's say exactly 510 feet from the corner. So something like this is B3 down in here. Up in here is your residential, and then this is all industrial. Does that kind of orient you to what this looks like? Any other questions on that? The, just immediately north of industrial is already zoned industrial. So the transfer station is not actually zoned industrial? Because it's county-owned. That would be a much deeper question that I don't have the answer to. So the transfer station is actually agriculture, but we all understand that its use is actually industrial, and most likely in our lifetimes will never be anything other than some form of, however you classify that, whether that would be industrial, light industrial or heavy industrial. So, and as Mr. Ebert said, here, he owns, has interest in both, all three of these properties? I'm not entirely certain. Just the one? Just the southernmost, yeah. Sorry. But both of these 20 acres were, are owned by Ebert family owners? Yes.
Does Robert own the other one where the house is?
He sold the house with five acres, so I think that's what that blocks were. Right. So.
But he owns the rest of it?
Correct. Yep. So. And the comprehensive plan calls for the front of that to be commercial and the back to be industrial. I believe you are correct. Let's check the. I'll, we've been reminded of this a trillion times by the city attorney, but what we're reviewing is a land use change. In other words, they're asking for a rezoning. We're not looking at a site plan. In fact, if he submitted a site plan tonight, there's absolutely no guarantee that that would be followed. And I'll give you a guarantee. All of these plans that we have been seeing will change. Everybody, this one will probably change. I would guess the distance between the area between the commercial and the multifamily probably will change, and the other ones will too, because it's going to be based upon market demand and market availability, and these are just concepts. Obviously, the sewer line and the, you know, the contour is a logical boundary. That may, probably won't change. But all of these plans are subject to change. Some more comments about things that the audience has said. I'm not sure that we're required to post notification. I don't think the state law says that. In fact, I was on the committee, the planning committee that helped write that state law.
What about decency?
Well, we did, well, decency, we did post it. We did send letters. The sign has phone numbers on it. Did anybody of these people call you and ask questions? No.
Would you call somebody that treats you like this?
No.
Would you call them and ask them questions?
Did you call your city commissioner? Did you, city council member?
I'm here.
Well, exactly. You are here.
I'm here.
That's right. You're all here, so somehow you got the word.
Because we told you to.
Is there something wrong with that?
There's a lot wrong with your notification.
Until you guys tried to steamroll this stuff through without having town hall meetings, and I don't know what signage for sure you're talking about, but one sign we stayed on McIntyre was like the little orange garage bell sign that was waving in the wind, and by no means did anyone read that drawing by. We stopped, we turned around, and we took a picture of it. It was not helpful.
Appreciate you.
And it was on land that was not even the land being talked about. I think the statute says that every owner has to be notified within 20 days, so the fact that he didn't give a letter, it should be startled by them.
I think the law has ruled that an accident like that does not negate the notification. We're, I'm not asking you to engage me or anybody else in conversation. I've closed the public hearing. Are there any other comments on the planning commission?
I'm concerned about the traffic.
Well, we're still, we have to be traffic studies when, I know, commercial requires traffic. So, kind of to piggyback off of what Jeanette said earlier, this is preparing land for marketability, right? A lot of developers do not want to have to go through this process. They want to offload this to somebody else who's willing to take the risk, to, who's willing to put in the legwork to figure out what the city would support, figure out what the planning commission would recommend supportive, figure out what the city council would ultimately, you know, rezone a property to. And then the developer, in the traditional sense of the word, the developer is just a person who goes out and gets a land, a piece of land entitled, right, to a set of developments. Some people specialize in industrial development. Some people specialize in commercial. The owner of this property wanted to rip the Band-Aid off and go for all three all at one time, residential, commercial, and industrial. So that's what this is. Anything else would have to be, you know, any major site plan would have to come back through before you guys. The plat would have to come through before that application to make sure that we, those lot lines are being established appropriately as per our code that has been, has been in place for a long time. And then site plans would happen. At those points, we're looking at, you know, water studies, we're looking at drainage studies, we're looking at traffic studies, all of those things to make sure that this, the development that will occur, the building of actual physical items, makes sense and meets our regulations. So depending on what it is, there is even further, if it's a conditional use only within a certain zoning district, if it's a conditional use within the business district, it would have to come back before you guys for that, to get the conditional use permit, in which case then we can establish some even higher standards that the developer, the owner of the property would have to meet before, you know, they open their facility, whatever that may be in the future. So are there any other questions of me? What's anybody's preference?
Well, I've been, the past two meetings now, I've been doing that. We can see if it goes? I move to recommend approval of case number 2025-DV-002, based on staff recommendations and analysis of the Golden Pact.
I'll second it.
Comments on the motion? Please call the roll.
Jeanette Lee Hildeman?
Yes.
Ginger Riddle?
Yes.
Jerry Geese?
Yes.
Nancy McDougal?
No.
Richard Hannan?
Eric, I don't have it on here, but an additional item on the one that got on the mail was that you were going to review. You had given to us the resolutions about the development district. Yeah, yeah. So. For another property. For another property, you received in the notice section of your packet, the resolution 2025, oh, sorry, B3 2025. This was a resolution that is required by the state statute that governs the reinvestment housing incentive district regulations. This was the resolution that was passed on March 6th and is required to go to the county commission, the school district, and you all, the planning commission, city planning commission. As a part of this process, this resolution is quite literally only stating that the city is going to have a public hearing on the RHID to establish it on April 17. So we have provided it to you now via email. We have now provided it to you in a public here, public notification through the planning commission here, packing. Any questions? We're required to be notified. We have no official action. There's nothing that we need to do. Anybody have questions? I have a couple. We don't know yet, but some of the questions I would have are, does the school board in the county have to agree? They do. But you can do it out there. You can do the partial. You can. Say yes. Do you know how long?
Depends on whether or not they want to participate.
Right. They can, you can do it with just the city or just the city.
And then developers make a choice whether that's a big enough.
Sure, sure, sure. It's an agreement. Do you know, do you know how long it lasts? So the RHID as presented can go up to 25 years statutorily. The developers requested a 25-year RHID, and so, yes. My only comment is that we need to know that the city council realizes that that means they'll pay no taxes into the general fund, and if there's additional fire protection or police protection or parks or any of that, that's going to be absorbed by the rest of us. And if it's residential, it doesn't have to be residential, if it's part of those 400 houses that we so desperately think we have a demand for, and we should subsidize that. Everybody else will subsidize that, not these people. That, those are excellent points. Many of the residents here are raising those points to the city council already and at the Board of County Commissioners. The city council is well aware. We are working through this, and we are aware of the positives and the negatives of establishing the district. I'm not suggesting that that's bad. I'm just saying that that's bad. That's a fact.
So can you negotiate the percentage?
Yeah, actually, the city council has, we are working on the development agreement, which would be a part of the district that gets adopted on April 17th. What has been presented to the council and to the public, I believe the total build-out infrastructure costs, something like $27 million. We're looking at a, at a development agreement of about $22 million that we've negotiated with the developer, so reducing the overall spend by about $5 million. So. Other comments on that question? I think the only other thing, I have one additional item for the agenda, and that is the meeting next month, the date for the meeting next month. I'm proposing that we do it the fourth Wednesday, which is the 23rd. Instead of the third, the staff has some conflicts. I would propose not to do it before because if there's anybody that's wanting to do a public hearing, we wouldn't want to cut them short to be able to get the 20 days in, the Wednesdays in. So I'd like the motion, because we have, in our bylaws, it's the 23rd of April, three, Wednesday. Five Wednesdays next month, so it's not as, the latest we could possibly be is the 21st, so it'll be the 23rd.
I'll make a motion. The next meeting in the month of April will be on the 23rd of April, which is the fourth Wednesday in April.
I'll second it.
One second. Call the roll, please.
Jeanette Lee Hildeman?
Yes.
Ginger Riddle?
Jerry Geese?
Yes.
Nancy McDougal?
Yes.
Richard Hannan?
No.
Are there any commissioners or staff that have any additional comments tonight? No, I appreciate the residents' comments. I appreciate the planning commissioners. Thank you for being here and being a part of this process. Valuable conversation and a good look for the city. So that's all I have.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All of you say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.